Madam Vice Chair, I think I have a square as the coaches moving here. Madam Vice Chair, thank you very much. We're honored to have here with us today our Sulfur High School Golden Core Soccer Team. And we have some proclamation that we'd like to hand out to them today. I'm gonna go ahead and just kind of read off on the proclamation, some of the things we have here. The Sulfur High Golden Core Soccer Team comprised of a group of dedicated athletes committed to excellence and achievement in their sport. And I'm gonna go ahead and name them. The two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three Sulfur High Golden Core Soccer Team consists of Eric Zinia, and I do apologize if I mispronounce your names, but please bear with me. Eric Zinia, Austin Duncan, Paxton Van Mir, Ethan Fiaz, Cole Poncho, Hiros Suarez, Neil Dupree, Brennan Darian, Anthony Mazon, Arcan Powell, Austin Doge, Aiden Duncan, Anthony LeBlu, Aiden Sargent, Kayden Goode, Robert Campos, Brock Derwin, Caleb Norwood, Simon Almroth, Aiden Granger, Tyler Massey, Alan Diator, Jasper Brimble, Wyatt Spencer, and the dedicated coaches of Sheriff's Falls, Tristan Baggett, Ashton Reel, and John Jordan Johnson. The Sulfur High Golden Core Soccer Team has earned an LHSAA Division One State semifinal for the first time in school history. A state playoff ranking of five, the highest ranking in school history as well. Back-to-back division championship titles for the first time in school history during the twenty-two, twenty-three season. Eric Zinia, Zinia, Neil Dupree have been selected to play in the Louisiana All-Star Game. Robert Campos has been selected in Division One District Three Offensive Most Valuable Player. Anthony LeBlu, Eric Zinia, and Neil Dupree, Robert Campos made first team All-District, and Cole Poncho and Austin Duncan made second team All-District. The city of Sulfur offers our appreciation and congratulations to the Sulfur High Golden Core Soccer Team for dedication and excellence in their sport. Congratulations, gentlemen. Do you have a proclamation from your point of view? Just kidding, but that works.
On three, one, two, and three. Take one more.
Guys, it was a real honor and privilege to get to see y'all play. If you didn't see these guys play, you really missed something. I'm telling you, I love on what y'all got these skinny ones. With the ball, you were just tossing the up and down. It was just a real pleasure seeing you play. The day we had the playoff at Sulfur High on that Saturday afternoon, there was such excitement in the stands. Thank you. You made us proud, your parents, and certainly the city proud. And just go to us.
Thank you, Austin.
Oh, okay. Is Paula here?
Yes, ma'am.
No, not, not other Paula.
Paul's not here right now.
Oh, okay.
Okay, item number three is a resolution granting a variance to Kenneth Smith, twelve eighty-four South Post Oak Road, to allow for living in an RV due to hurricane Laura, Resolution sixteen twenty-three in Zappshire. May I argue this, Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much. I'm rising in favor of this hardship variance because Mr. Smith here, it was in a mobile home, and the mobile home actually sits in a flood zone, floodway. And it was destroyed during the storm. He did file for the PPDR program, you know, and he's waiting on that determination. In the meantime, he's living in an RV on the properties and would like to remain there on that property. Once the RV is taken out, he doesn't have the financial means to be able to replace it, so he wants to remain in the RV. As long as he occupies that RV, it will remain on the property. Once it's not, then it will be removed from the property. So that's the request is for Mr. Smith. And he is here today, but I'm speaking on his behalf.
And so I can support that as long as you are actively living in that RV. But once you are no longer there, then, you know, so I want it stipulated.
It'll be removed from the property.
Yes, it's gotta be removed from the property.
It's in order.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
It just mentions the city has the right to withdraw at any time, so while, I guess the point would be that.
Yeah, clearly stated that once Mr. Smith is no longer occupied.
That's right.
RV that may be removed from the property.
Can we add that, please?
Yeah, if y'all want to do an amendment to take the whereas clause and then just move that into the text of the resolution, then I think that would make it a little more clear. So you would be adding an additional section in the be it resolved part that would say, this variance shall expire and the RV shall be removed at any time, Kenneth Smith no longer resides in the RV. Y'all can make that as an amendment.
Is that funky, Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you understand? Yes, sir.
So this that shows recommendation on the other page is not a part of the ordinance? That says recommendation in accordance with article.
That's just the land use administrator's recommendation.
So that's not, that's what's omitted in there? We need to put that in?
It needs to be.
Is that what y'all are calling that?
No, I think, Ms. Ms. Asher, I want to do an amendment to take what is in the third whereas paragraph and move it down into the text of the resolution. Is that right, Ms. Asher?
Yes.
You can make that motion.
Okay, seven.
You'll vote on the amendment, and then if it's adopted, you'll vote on the.
Can we collectively say aye, or do we need to do individuals?
For an amendment, you can do a verbal.
Okay, so almost in favor of.
Aye.
Now y'all need to move on the thing as well.
So I will make a motion to move that as amended in the resolution. Ms. Asher?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender? Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Item number four, the resolution for both opposing revised and restated Home Rule Charter for the City of Sulfur.
Madam Vice Chair, I may for two minutes here. First off, I want to thank this body for recognizing some of the shortcomings our charter's had. It's thirty-nine years old. There was some things in it that were antiquated. There's some things that needed to be addressed. There were places in it where verbiage has changed. Technology's changed. And many, many places we had where it was in conflict with state statutes. And the statutes have been changed over the years. And so you guys took it upon yourself to recognize that and be able to appoint a charter commission, a Home Rule Charter Commission. And I want to say that the Home Rule Charter Commissioners are here, and I want to name them. Carlit Ziegler, Danny DePatta, Becky Vennsat, Emmons, Gina Granger, and Sid Rossi, and Justin Satie served as our charter commission. And I will tell you, you could not have picked many more individuals I think were more qualified to do what they did. They did an outstanding job going through this document, and it's a pretty large document. The document is not, I wouldn't say a bad document. It's actually a very good document, that was written. But after thirty-nine years, there's been some things that needed to be addressed. And so they took it upon themselves to do so and have done an outstanding job of coming up with what I think is a excellent document now. And I think it's, they should, you know, I think the city of Sulfur, citizens of Sulfur will be proud of what they came with. Like I said, there's some things in here, some of it's verbiage, for instance, like now it's considered as, in the process of reapportionment, it's not longer reapportioned, it's redistricting, so it's a matter of just a word change, for instance. Terminology, technology-wise, it referred to facsimile signatures, where now it's electronic signatures, so it's things of that nature. We were in conflict with state statutes on a few things. Whereas, for instance, like you add something at a meeting, you gotta do it by unanimous vote in the charter, by majority vote. They changed it. They changed it about two thousand ten or eleven. And so it was in conflict there, and there's other places it was in conflict just as well. So we went in, they went in and made those changes necessary to bring it up to date. There's a couple of changes in there that, there was some verbiage that was not in there, and I think that, that I don't know if it was intended initially, especially when it comes, I'm gonna talk about, just talks about compensation for the council. Whereas the council has the ability to look at the compensation, do the compensation of the mayor. There was no mechanism in there for the council to look at their compensation. And, but it stipulated, just as it is in the mayor's, that it can't be done in the last year of the term. And it has to be for the next term, meaning that the city council cannot give themselves an increase in their compensation. It cannot, so.
Well, you already know how I feel.
I understand it, but what I'm saying is for the next council, and it's only, you do it once every four years. So it's all reviewed and done once every four years. So when we started looking at other cities throughout the state, they do it very similarly to what we did. And I mean, there was quite a few of them that were almost very close to what we, what we, well, what the verbiage that they, the charter commission added to the thing. And we also started looking at what other councils are making across, not only locally, but across the state, but locally too. And there's a great disparity there about what our council is compensated and then what others' councils across the state are compensated. And a lot of people, you know, there's, there was always a question of whether, how much a council should be paid, or even if a council should be paid. The issue of the fact is that you guys and most councils sacrifice their families. They sacrifice their careers or their businesses, and they sacrifice financially. These folks up here are continuously bombarded by wanting donations, contributions, you know, sponsorships for various things. And at the end of the day, it costs you to serve. I had a former council member, he told me he spent thousands of dollars in supporting this, their community. And so, you know, when you look at it in its totality, I think that it's important that we, we recognize that in our public servants, our public servants at heart, that also sacrifice very much. So that's one of the things that's also probably the most controversial thing you'll find in this whole document. But I think it's, I think it's a great document. I think they've done an excellent job, and they're here tonight, with the exception of one, they're all back here. Dan DePatta served as chairman of this chair, and they did, like I say, they did a great work. And I couldn't ask for a better commissioner to sit and do what they did. With that, I submit to you this revised Home Rule Charter and ask that you move to place it on by.
I did have something I wanted to say before we got to the vote part.
We have someone who wants to speak on item number four.
I really don't want anything that I'm about to say to take away from what these people did. They gave their time to research and meet, and they were real public servants, and I don't think, heart, any, any one of them did anything that they thought wasn't right in any one of those meetings. So I'm about to be critical, but I do not want to take away from these people. The main thing I want to address, of course, is the, this council being able to set council salaries. I understand it's not for this term, but I don't care if it's ten terms from now. I think there's, it's problematic for a council to be able to give themselves raises. And for some data to, to really bring that forward, I pulled up council salaries for around the country. And the first place I found said Shreveport was number one in the country, above California or any other state. But something a little more recent says Louisiana is one of the highest. States with higher salaries for city councilmen than Louisiana is Alaska, California, DC, New Jersey, and Massachusetts. Those are the only ones that beat us at all, and we're very close. So you can say, well, cost of living. So we took in cost of living, and so we're right with cost of living factored in. We're about the same place as Alaska and California. Wasn't able to really find anything on the District of Columbia. But New Jersey and Massachusetts were way outpaid compared to them. That's in Louisiana. So then I looked at near, near Shreveport, because that was supposed to be the highest one, and that's Bojor City, Monroe, and Lake Charles. So they're all very similar to what Shreveport has. I really doubt that those councils are relying on city's people's votes. There's no way that people voted these kind of salaries for these kind of people. Now, our city council may say, and one of them did say to me, well, I'm not gonna vote, I'm not gonna vote for that kind of raise. What about four years from now? Like the mayor said, every four years. This can be looked at by the council. So I feel like this is the main reason that this Home Rule Charter should not pass.
So, can I ask you a question?
Please.
On this paper that you gave us?
Yes.
Is this like the total of all the council on your salary, or this is one person?
One person.
Okay.
Shreveport's right at a quarter million dollars.
Forty-five hundred compared to thirty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-eight. I think they would impeach the council. I'm like, to get to that place would be, take more than.
Forty, it was forty years since the last Home Rule Charter was majorly done. I'm not including, I mean, that's what the mayor said for eighty-four, that's the main major one. So forty years. So for forty years, if we say this council can set, set salaries for councils, then forty years from now, we don't know who's gonna be there. So, yeah, you wouldn't, but this is setting it for councils for decades to come.
Madam Chair, what does it say the Shreveport City Council's salary?
The Shreveport City Council is thirty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars per year. The average salary for a city councilman is thirty-eight, three seventy-eight per year in Shreveport, Louisiana.
Goes from about thirty to about forty.
Can you give me what Westlake's is?
Sure.
Am I concerned?
Westlake is five hundred and ten dollars, and their population of six thousand one hundred, excuse me, I'm sorry, forty-five hundred sixty-eight people.
Mayor Wood is ours.
Three hundred and fifty dollars before taxes, two hundred and eighty-seven after taxes.
Just so the public knows.
Okay, so.
Well, there, I don't think there's any doubt. There are some people that say you should be paid it off. I'm not one of those people. I think your salary should be doubled tomorrow and not have to wait on the next, the next term to start, because that's entirely too low. I do wish they put into the Home Rule Charter that you owe me twice a month, because that would, because most of these, most of these other places do mean at least twice a month. Some of them make four times a month, two agenda meetings to decide what's gonna be on the agenda, and two, and two council meetings. But I definitely think your salary should be doubled.
I'm sorry.
No, you can go ahead.
No, I, I just, real quick, just for, I, I want to thank the, the commission. First off, the, the hours that y'all put in was definitely noticed. Just my personal opinion is that I don't think any legislative body of government should have the ability to vote their own rest. Always said that. I think anybody who knows me knows that I've always said that. That, like I said, I don't want that to take away from me. But I also agree that the council does not make much money. And I'm not gonna say what we should or shouldn't make, because I'm one of those that, I mean, it's basically a volunteer job.
But to me, a logical thing would have been to double the salary, and I'm sorry.
But what I'm gonna do is I will most likely give it to the people.
Yes.
And let them make that decision.
Yes.
And I think that, you know, no matter how I feel, we'll put it forward and allow a vote.
If I may, Madam Vice Chair, you understand that when you, when the council takes it up to be able to review their compensation, it's in public here. So the public has a say-so in that whole process. Yeah, it's not like they can poke themselves a raise. There's a public input to this.
But that public input, if it's, if it is handled the way the charter meetings were, Mayor, you would not let IT send out notifications about the charter meetings. No, no, no notification other than something put into the, Lake Charles American Press was the only notice.
We followed state law.
You followed state law, which is the minimum, and doesn't, doesn't do enough for our, does not do enough for our city. Our city needed notifications set three days.
It was on Facebook that he was denying people went on something like that.
Three days before, three days before the very last meeting is when it came on the city's Facebook. The last.
But once again.
We're not arguing with him, Mr. Sir, go ahead and give your.
No, no, it, it, I'm glad you brought that up, because those, everything y'all brought up needs to be brought up. This, this is, yes, this discussion needs to happen. I'm sorry if I'm overly excited, but I'm, I'm excited that you're bringing this up, because it needs to be discussed. But I, I mean, I talked to a lot of the, the charter members. They disagreed, we disagreed back and forth, but that's what it's supposed to be about. In a democracy or a republic, discussions need to, need to take place. So, yes, if there's a council that happens in the public, that's great, but the notification system the state requires is not enough for our citizens.
Madam Chair, could I just add, this information is from salary.com, which appears to be a guess at what the Shreveport City Council is paying. The Shreveport City Council has paid fifteen thousand dollars per year. There was a vote in two thousand and twenty-one to raise it to twenty-five thousand dollars per year, based on the public comments that they received at that vote. They postponed that vote and did not adopt that vote. So the Lake Charles City Council, which you said was close to this, I can tell you it's fifteen hundred dollars per month. And just like the police jury, sixteen hundred dollars per month.
And do they get benefits?
No.
The Sulfur Charter does not allow you to get benefits.
No, I didn't ask.
And there was nothing in the Sulfur Charter that was being changed that would allow you to get benefits. The only proposed change here is perhaps the most restrictive change that exists anywhere in the state. The general rule in the state is that you adopt an ordinance, and that's the end of it. It can be effective tomorrow. The provision here would be, it has to be done at least a year in advance of the election, so the public knows going into the election what did or didn't happen. And in addition to that, it can't go in effect until after the next term. So anybody that felt, the public felt like didn't do what they were supposed to do, or didn't do it like they wanted them to do it, they voted them out of office. And so that provision is what you have for your mayor's compensation provision here, and is among the most restrictive. Lake Charles doesn't have any restriction at all. Lake Charles, they just adopt an ordinance, and they do it. And it's ended up at fifteen hundred dollars. So I'm not saying that's good, bad, or indifferent, but it would not come with all the restrictions that they have here. And, you know, historically, the mayor compensations and those sorts of things over the years, Sulfur has generally lagged other areas, I think in part because there's so much accountability. It has to be done so far in advance and all that kind of stuff. So it, you know, whether it's good or bad, the people will get to decide on it. I just wanted to make sure that it was not misinformation.
Is, is there a cap, Mr. Coleman, legally by the legislature, anything?
Or what?
A cap to the amount of salary?
How did Minnesota, Minnesota, and, and should police jury?
Police jury there, right, but not in.
The, the, the police jury is a creation, a creation of state statutes, so the legislature has to set a cap. The cities are, the laws enacted, cities are a creation of state statute, but there is no cap for those. But Home Rule Charter cities are creations of the legislature, so there's no mechanism. If you don't put a mechanism in the charter, there is no mechanism that can exist.
Right, that, that was my concern.
You're talking about, you know, how we're paid in Louisiana. I don't know if you take New Orleans out of that, because taking New Orleans, it's due in New Orleans.
I mean, that, to the mayor's point, my understanding is the Jefferson Parish Council and the New Orleans City Council are paid like full-time employees with a full-time staff. I think they even get drivers and bodyguards. But in general, that is not.
That's a thought.
The rule anywhere else, anywhere else in the state. That's not the rule for Lake Charles.
We're not looking at New Orleans on this one. Okay, so, any other person who wants to speak on this?
I'd like to say that the charter commission was not under the authority of the council. And that being said, as a council member, that's one thing. But we also attended, some of us attended as just concerned citizens. It's just a citizen of the Sulfur and not a council member. I came, I never said a word. I listened, because I'm interested. I went and ran for this position had I not been interested in our city and trying to do the best. It's not perfect, but I really do take to heart what I do, regardless of what I get paid. That was never a thought. But I enjoy. But I enjoy doing it and if I can help one person in the years that I've served, then I'm, I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing. And so I wanna thank y'all for your service and, um, I appreciate it as a concerned citizen. And I know that what you do is not for this council or for this administration, but for our city, our city as a whole. So thank you very much.
Ms. Appchar, I'd like to say something. It's nice, I liked it.
Stop, would you go to the podium, please?
Okay.
We'll put her name on there. State your name and address, please.
Paul Louvier, four thirty-six Sands Point, Sulfur, Louisiana. And what I wanted to thank you for was, um, I think we need to all pull together more as a city to help our community with people who are still displaced and, you know, they don't wanna be there.
Ms. um, Ms. Louvier, can you say that when your thing comes up? Because this is not what the.
I think it's my turn.
Nope.
This is not the agenda item. Are you talking about the task force? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. The topic is our charter commission?
Oh, I thought it was.
We're talking on the next.
It was my turn.
Oh, no ma'am, not yet.
I'll call on you.
You got my point though. I will call. I thought you were just talking about the city as a whole, it sounded nice, it was nice.
Partly, um. You got a vote on it?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have to do it all collectively or?
No.
No motion, second. All votes in favor?
Uh, Ms. Ellender?
Oh, yes.
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Naisad?
Yes.
And Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Okay, I have number five. Yes, Ms. Taylor, uh, Ms. Taylor, can I ask you a question? Would you like me to read the proclamation and then go present it to you? Or do you wanna stand up there with me while I read the whole thing?
Yes.
And then we'll go, I'll present it to you over there. That's what I'm gonna do because I wouldn't wanna stand up there the whole time while they're talking. And I knew you wouldn't want to either. All right, whereas Paula Taylor, executive director for SC three Sulfur Christian Community Coalition, has been in this position since its indoctrination in twenty-ten where she focuses on building and balancing capacity which are financial, human, and resources. She also supervises all organizational development, coalition staff, facilities, volunteers, and board members. And whereas, as a strategic planner, Paula casts visions to their stakeholders, communicates and markets programming, handles public relations, and ensures meeting mission goals, stays at the forefront, and whereas Paula is one of the original pew sitters whose heart was transformed as her love for God began to overflow to a love for people. And whereas Paula's passion is serving the poor and her prayer is to see multigenerational grip of poverty, addiction, and hopelessness be broken by the power of the gospel and to see lives redeemed and transformed as people empowered to become all that God created them to be. And whereas Paula's vision is to see the body of Christ unite in the fight for justice and righteousness as they work together to empower the poor in their communities. And whereas Paula was raised in Sulfur and is a graduate of McNeese State University, Paula and her husband Scott are self-employed business owners in Sulfur and they have three daughters, two son-in-laws, and six grandchildren. And whereas Paula is the recipient of the Blue Cross Service, Blue Cross Blue Shield Angel Award, the City of Sulfur's Volunteer of the Month, State Formula Advisory Board Grant, Thrives Magazine's Good Samaritan Award, Community Foundation's Grant, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Crisis Response Grant, and the twenty-twenty West Capesute Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year Award. Now therefore, be it resolved and proclaimed that Mayor Dana Hay and Sulfur City Council do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three as Paula Taylor Day in the City of Sulfur and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens of Sulfur. I served on the SC three board with Paula for how long, how many years, about nine?
Nine.
About nine. And I will tell you that all of this is true about her.
Thank you very much.
Can you stick it from us? Say you have to take a picture. Can you shoot? Thank you. Take care of this one. Oh, no, you wanna say anything at the podium?
No, I don't. Thank you guys. We don't have to stay. We don't want to stay. I, I know Scotty's waiting to be served.
If you, you can go if you want to or you can stay.
I'm gonna stay. See what's on me.
Okay, item number five is a resolution granting a variance to Paula Louvier, four thirty-six Sands Point, to allow temporary living in an RV due to Hurricane Laura. Ms. Louvier?
Now it's your turn.
I better get out.
Yes, I am.
I made a fool of myself once. I don't want it twice.
No, you're fine, I'm sorry.
Hello, how is everybody? Um, I did get my permits and I did have my inspection of a home for Mr. Jerry Jones. Uh, I'm not sure what else.
That's all you need to say. Okay. Um, do y'all have any questions of her?
Oh, and she's permit?
No, ma'am. We need a motion in a second. So move.
Second.
Okay, um.
Just, this is for three months.
Oh, okay.
That's what it says in the resolution.
The resolution says this is for three months, Ms. Louvier.
Yes.
You know, you, you got your permit, so you're gonna be working on the, and then they'll inspect it, okay?
Yes, yes, I sure hope so. If anyone has any other ideas about how getting it fixed, please contact us. I'm not gonna stay for the rest.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naisad?
Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Item number six is ruled to show cause for the condition of the following addresses. To con- aid to condemn building or structure located at eleven nineteen Alvin Street in accordance with Article nine, section five through two eighty-six, five, two eighty-six through five, two ninety-six. This is in my district. Anyone here on this subject that's? Okay. So move.
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naisad?
Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Item six B is to condemn building or structure located at four twenty-seven, four twenty-seven and a half, and four thirty-five North Crocker in accordance with Article nine, section five, two twenty-six through five, two ninety-six. And again, um, this is bad and it's open and it's very unsafe, in my opinion. Is anyone here on that? Okay.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naisad?
Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Item number ten is a public hearing on ordinance, amending ordinance number seventeen thirty-three, MC series, to increase certain fees for demolition, electrical, fire, gas, house moving, mechanical, mobile home, plumbing, portable buildings, building, grading, plan reviews for residential and commercial, generator, installation, change contractor, covert inspector, and side visits outside city limits. Ordinance forty-three twenty-three, Mayor Dana Hay.
So, after the last council meeting when we had introduced these rates, um, Denise was out of the office that week, so I didn't get to speak with her in depth before the meeting. Uh, but we have since, I have since learned that this actually, uh, was, um, direction that was brought down from the state level. Um, they, they increased rates statewide. I included the state, the parish, and municipalities. Um, Lake Charles and the parish implemented the increases back in January. Um, and the increases are, um, due to additional costs associated with environmental laws and requirements that have changed. Um, we looked and the last time these rates were updated was in, uh, two thousand and fourteen.
It's. Do we need a motion to get it discussed?
I wanted to speak on this item.
I got you.
Thank you.
I know this one.
Thank you.
Um. Do we need a motion in a second to discuss? So move.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Bruce Soren?
I was concerned about the amounts, I was concerned about the amounts that this, um, these increases are. Uh, so I don't know, and perhaps you all do. These percentages are governed by the state that you have to raise them this much?
Denise, do you wanna speak on any of that?
Yeah, the, the state, I can't say it was a mandate. It was, it was handed down from the state that we increased our fees because of the additional work that has to go in due to the environmental requirements centered around, um, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, things like that that are having to take place now that did not have to take place before January first.
Okay, just to, just to do a quick review of the percentages that there increased. The first item is, um, demolition permits. Commercial went up thirty, is proposed to go up thirty-three percent. Residential is sixty-six. Electrical permits, the first two, are sixty-six percent. The only one that was low was the fire permit of six percent on that page. On the next page, uh, gas pressure test, sixty-six percent. The next one's five, the next one's ten. Then mechanical permits, inspections, sixty-six percent. Permit per ton, sixty-six percent. Uh, hundred percent on the next item under mechanical permits. Three items under plumbing permits went up sixty-six percent, one of them only seventeen, and at the bottom, twenty-five percent. Uh, the last few, thirteen to twenty-five percent on those. Um. I don't know what to say, that high of a percentage has to.
Well, we're talking, we're talking about demolition permit, demo commercial from thirty dollars to forty dollars. Demo, uh, for residential from fifteen dollars to twenty-five dollars. Electrical permits from fifteen to twenty-five. Um, fire permits from eighty to eighty-five. Gas permits, fifteen to twenty-five. House moving permit from a hundred dollars to a hundred and five dollars. So although the percentages look large, the dollar amounts are not, not that large. Especially for fifteen years, not increasing permits.
And also, I'm under the impression that some of these permits, when we got to looking into it, we were paying as a city for these permits. They were not collecting enough for the permits.
Not the permits.
Or the work being done.
Well, I would say if you look at it as a workload gift, um, I think what you're thinking about is her super, um, tax.
Oh, okay.
That's another item.
All right.
That one.
Okay, so that's another one, not this one, sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to point out the percentages, thank you, Madam Chair.
But the dollar amounts?
Yeah.
Five or ten dollars.
Anywhere from five to fifteen dollars, I believe, um, is probably the most for that.
I don't know what we do these days, any of us, whether we go to the grocery store, gas station, if you do anything and there's increases. In our business, some of our materials is a hundred and fourteen percent, that's astronomical.
And we're still in line with parish and state on our, our fees. Uh, I don't have any other people. Ms. Bruce Soren, on your number four one, I'm gonna add, because you got up and spoke on the chart, I'm gonna add that number on here.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, so.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naisad?
This, this will bring us up to line with the state, uh, is asking. Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Item number eleven is a public hearing on ordinance entering into a cooperative endeavor agreement with South Chicago Police Jury for the summer feeding program. Ordinance forty-four twenty-three, Mayor Dana Hay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is something we participate each year, uh, during the summertime months, there's children that, uh, go without and the, um, the school board, uh, excuse me, the, uh, police jury actually has a summer feeding program that allows these children to come to certain locations and they'll be able to fed, be fed during those time periods. So, we participated for many, many years and we're asking to continue to do that.
Second.
Second. Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naisad?
Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Item, items number thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three introductions. We will introduce it this meeting and the next meeting will be a resolution that we vote on.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry. Um, that we vote on. So, keep that in mind on these introductory ordinances. Item thirteen is an introduction of ordinance adopting the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year July one to twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four for the City of Sulfur, Louisiana. Ordinance forty-six twenty-three.
So move.
If, um. If we were, uh, to have some questions about some of the fees going forward.
I have a whole narrative.
Okay. Uh, a second. I figured you'd be prepared.
And she'll set up meetings with us all.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. Um. Does anyone wish to speak on this one?
Do you want me to give my, um, highlights first?
Well, yeah, it says referred to Jenny Moore.
Well, let's do this. So I'm just gonna give some highlights on, on some of the, you know, bigger items, um, throughout the budget, the summary of the budget for this coming fiscal year. Um, our projected, um, ending general fund balance is thirty million, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, it's an increase of three million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars from the current year. And that's after we do a two million dollar transfer to the public utility fund. And I'll get into more detail about the public utility fund after I go through the general fund. The increased fund balance is primarily due to storm recovery reimbursement monies. Um, a little background on that. To date, we have spent, um, right at thirty million dollars on storm recovery and we have been able to collect in revenues at twenty-one point five million dollars through FEMA and insurance thus far. We still have about another thirty million dollars left to go on storm recovery. The general fund expenditures are projected to be twenty-eight million, eighty-three thousand, which is an increase of about fifteen percent from the current year. That's mainly due to open positions in fire police. And what I mean by that is our current year is coming in under what our expenditures plan to be and it's mainly due to salaries and benefits from having so many open positions. Uh, we're proposing a three percent across-the-board increase to all civil service base rates for the annual step grade table. So with civil service, fire, and police, um, the rule is if you do, what you do for one, you have to do for all in like positions. Um, that have the same, it's, um, same pay per same performance. So when we do across-the-board increases, we do it on their base rates. We're proposing three percent. Um, then we're also proposing a two percent across-the-board increase for all other employees that are not civil service. Um, additional head counts as requested by the department heads and that has been approved by the mayor and myself and Human Resources is, uh, one extra deputy marshal for the marshal's office, and additional fire prevention officer for the fire department, and a, a safety coordinator, um, to work in correlation with risk management and, um, public works administration. We're also proposing to increase the tool allowance for shop employees by five dollars per paycheck. Those employees have to purchase their own tools. And the uniform allowance for fire and police by fifteen dollars per month. As I go through each point, if y'all have questions, you can stop me, we can talk about it more. Uh, we've seen over a thirty percent increase, you heard me right, over a thirty percent increase in insurance premiums over this last year, including workers' comp, general liability, and property. Insurance is a big problem in, um, across the state right now. Uh, major acquisitions in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, uh, include an updated municipal government software, eight police units, per Mr. John Wong. eight police units, per Mr. John Wong. He said he really needed thirteen, but we're gonna go down to, uh, on eight, if we can obtain eight this year. Um, a generator for the fire station and a skid steer with attachments for the street department. Now going to the public utility fund, uh, we're looking at a deficit of one million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. That is prior to the two million dollar transfer from the general fund. That's while we're doing a transfer from the general fund. So the projected year-end, uh, twenty twenty-four net asset value will be fifty-nine million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Operating expenses in the public utility fund exceed operating revenue by two million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, mostly due to operating cost increases for water and sewer. Proposed utility rate increases for residential and commercial are an average of seven percent collectively. Um, the monthly residential rates we are proposing, um, are gonna go up six point three-three percent, which is a dollar sixty-five per month increase for water, two dollars and fifteen cent increase for sewer, an eighty-five cent increase for garbage, which is contractual. We've not ever gone in, up on the capital recovery fee, um, and so I, I'm asking to go up ten, just ten cents per month. That goes to, um, improvements for water and sewer infrastructure. Um, and the DHH dollar is a pass-through, it goes straight to DHH. So that's a monthly utility bill increase of four dollars and seventy-five cents. Our capital projects, uh, budget, um, we have sixty-five million, three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in current budgets. Um, current budget, budget of projects. Uh, we have expended thirty million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars of that so far, with thirty-four million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand to go. The proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget adds an additional twelve million, six hundred thousand dollars. And that's to fund six point five million in water, wastewater projects, four point one million in street improvement pop, projects, and two million in building improvement projects. Um, this, um, was a very, um, a very detailed, a very good and productive budget year. Um, I'm proud of, um, the team and, um, which includes not only the accounting department, but also every department head is very, uh, involved, uh, as well as, as the mayor. Do you have any questions? Again, the budget gives, um, at city hall for public, um, review. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to my office.
It just, uh, the water fee, it seems like every year, it's like the twelve-month trial period ends and we go up another few bucks.
Sure.
Um, right, so the state has, uh, legislated, or actually we voted on it, I think, last December, um, where if we're not, uh, in compliance with the amount we charge, um, the state will set our fees for us.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Where are we at in that?
So we're actually about to get a state mandated rate study run. Um, we're, we're waiting for more information. Um, I know that, uh.
Because the state could come in and say that we're not charged enough, right?
Actually, they're, they're, they're going to. Um, and so I would rather do it incrementally, um, instead of having a flash flood. And also our charter doesn't allow us to go up more than ten percent. But if the state mandates it, I don't know what kind of situation.
Well, that was gonna be my question, if, if we get down to it and they come and they say, I mean, that, that takes it out of our hands pretty much anyway, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, if we're metered, would that be different?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think we're at a point where we need to start seriously discussing that. And I know people hate it, but I think we're gonna get to a point to where.
It means that it would depend on who you are. If you're a person with in-ground irrigation in the swimming pool versus if you're a little lady living by yourself.
You're a hundred percent right, and that's, I, I know absolutely my, I have three kids at home, I have five people in my house. I know my bill will probably more, be more expensive. However, I'm not worried about me, I'm, I'm, I am worried about the little old lady who, you know, may be struggling with this.
You know, that same thing, I've always said is that the equity of it is, uh, it's totally unfair, the fact that having a one-person household is subsidizing that five-person household with all amenities that go with it.
Yeah, if I wanted to empty a pool and fill it, this offers a great place to be if you, if you wanted to have.
Every week you could do it.
Right, we're at a point to where.
You also have no motivation to fix a leak.
Correct, correct, and I think we could.
And that's draining our plants.
One of the other things it does, if people don't think about this, is that it taxes our, our water plants because they have to produce more, and it taxes our wastewater plant because they have to receive more.
Right.
What point will it take?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm, well, it's something that's gonna have to give, uh, we're, we're getting to a point now to where it's just, uh, like, like, um, Ms. Appchar said, everything's so expensive. I just don't know what's gonna be the one that breaks the candy back, uh, for people, so.
Well, I can add to that, that we are increasing the, um, the, the public utility assistance program by three dollars a month. And so, uh, anyone who qualifies for that, it's a total discount of twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents per month. So we do try to do that to help the ones who are on a fixed income.
I don't mean to interrupt you, who do they need to contact if?
Well, we put an ad in the paper every year, and, but we take applications all year long and they can contact the water department and then get an application.
Did you fill out a, a, a?
No, I.
I know I saw your hand go up, I don't know.
Ms. Sneed, the only thing I would eventually add is sometimes this confuses people. Um, you know, the trash is just a pass-through cost.
Right.
And so, you know, it's a pass-through cost that does not appear on your water bill in other communities. So when you're comparing apples and oranges, you know, sometimes that leads to the wrong conclusion because that's twenty, twenty-two dollars of the amount.
I agree, people tell me all the time, oh, my water bill is eighty dollars. It's, it's, look at it, read it, and, and I get that. So it does, it, you know, it needs to be broken down, but, anyway, I'm sorry, I ran into them.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Ms. Sorensen, I'd like to highly compliment you on the budget book that I left on my kitchen table. Sorry, it's very, very well put together. It was easy to handle, to read through, print, you can read it. Magnifying glass, at least I didn't have it. And I, I, I would dare say since I've been on the council, it's, it's tough.
Thank you.
I, I told you five, five storm, you exceeded that.
Joy challenged me last year.
I have a question, just, uh, could you? There's some chords up there. Any police, twenty-three, twenty-nine, obviously, and just, uh, question, clarification, cause my ears popped up a little bit when I heard, uh, a raise for our police and fire.
Yes.
Is that three percent or, or? Three percent?
Three percent.
Not one percent per year?
No, three percent effective in July.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Just gonna do my little quick thing on this one, then I'm gonna get up again.
Are you, are you on here, Ms.?
Fourteen. Any fourteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. I'm sorry, thank you.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Yeah, see, no.
Okay, item number fourteen is an introduction of ordinance setting forth water fees by the City of Sulfur, ordinance forty-seven twenty-three, Mayor Danahay, and the old service.
Well, I believe I covered the water fees, so if you have any questions, we can, I can just answer them directly.
Ms. Bruce Sorensen?
Thank you.
Ms. Bruce, I'm three six six, Compton Street. I just wanted to, um, go over the little sheet that I sent y'all, it was about the water thing, just so everybody'll kinda have an idea of how we went up, because in my mind, we were fifty dollars and all of a sudden we're seventy-five. So I pulled out some, some water bills that I could get my hands on quickly. In November twen, November of twenty twenty, it was already sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And I understand this is water garbage and, thank you, water garbage and, and everything altogether. But that's how, that's how everybody's looking at their bills, is what is my bottom line. January twenty-two, it had only gone up very little, seventy dollars and twenty-five cents. April twenty-two, seventy dollars and sep, seventy-five cents, so just a small jump. In July twenty-two, twenty-two, it went up five dollars to seventy-five dollars. That's just, like she said, about a seven, a seven percent jump, so that's not a huge jump. I just wanted to bring up the figures for everybody to look at, because if this is an annual thing, you know, that's kinda gonna be a problem. So I, I do hope that y'all can get us some more information on, on metering. Are, are they gonna look into do, who does, who's gonna do that, Austin?
So we, we've already started that process.
Okay, so I wanna verify something. This, this says twenty nineteen to twenty twenty was sixty-nine fifty.
Yes.
Twenty twenty to twenty-one was seventy dollars. Twenty-one to twenty-two was seventy, seventy-five. And twenty-two to twenty-three was seventy-five. So we went up in twenty-three, but I'm not even.
Maybe, 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 maybe I typed them up wrong. But I know, I know now we're at seventy-five dollars, so if we go up another six dollars, then we're over eighty dollars and, and.
And it's four dollars and seventy-five cents is what we're proposing.
No, all of it all together is?
It would be seventy-nine, seventy-five, right?
Seventy-nine, seventy-five.
Right, so we're only going at four seventy-five.
Yes, okay. But if we gotta have it now, doing this every year, that's why I just wanted to, just to highlight it again. Thank you, and so I don't need to get up anymore, those are all.
And ma'am chair, in addition to the higher inflation you're mentioning, the, the year she was mentioning where it only went up forty cents or whatever, that was the pass-through of the garbage, cause the city froze it because of the hurricane.
Right, it was fifty cents in one year, seventy-five cents the next, and then it was four twenty-five, and now it's four seventy.
So the biggest jump was because of the garbage before?
Yes, ma'am.
But this one is, is not, the majority of it is, is, is the other items.
Well, we. So in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we were sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Then in twenty twenty to twenty-one, uh, we went up fifty cents and was a point seven-two percent increase. That was contractual trash. And then in twenty-one, twenty-two, we went up seventy-five cents, which was only one percent, which was contractual trash. And then in twenty-two, twenty-three, we went up, uh, was it four dollars and twenty-five cents? And so it was six percent. And then this year, we're proposing another four dollars and twenty-five cents, which is, are four dollars and seventy-five cents, which is six point three-three percent for residential.
Right, and part of that is trash, yeah?
Oh, yeah. And our, uh, garbage contract begins, um, at the end of twenty-four.
And that, that is, that is all the residential we were discussing right there, but when I went over all the commercial stuff, um, I know that you're capped by the Home Rule Charter to ten percent and all the flat rates for water for commercial and trailers and utilities and all that was pennies below the ten percent mark on all of those.
Cause you know, we really shouldn't have flat rate for commercial, that doesn't make any good sense.
So, so y'all are looking at correcting all of that?
Yes, yes, ma'am, Austin's been doing a great job of addressing all of it.
Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you all. Okay, do we vote?
Fourteen, no, you didn't. I need a motion in a second.
Save it.
Yes. Uh, Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
And Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Number fifteen is an introduction of ordinance setting forth sewer fees charged by the City of Sulfur, ordinance forty-eight twenty-three.
Save it.
Okay, covered it all, all right. Bruce Sorensen, you don't need to get up.
I do not.
I'm not asking, I'm not telling.
Yeah, yeah, cause no, I wrote them all down there, I appreciate you.
All right.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item number sixteen is an introduction of ordinance setting forth garbage trash collection fees charged by the City of Sulfur, ordinance forty-nine twenty-three.
Save it.
Second. Um, this would be eighty-five cents, eighty-five cents in the increase. Um, do you vote?
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Item sixteen, item seventeen is an introduction of ordinance amending ordinance number thirteen ninety-three M C series setting forth tie-in fees for water and sewer, ordinance fifty twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
So this is the one that you were referring to earlier about how we have, we're losing money.
We came to our attention that we were losing money on these, these tie-in fees for water and sewer.
The last time they were looked at, um, and evaluated was in two thousand and sixteen. And so, uh, we went and did an analysis at Austin, I did a cost analysis, I looked at what the costs were in two thousand and sixteen versus what the costs are now. Um, and, uh, I recommended increases to the mayor, uh, based off of those percentages. And he had to go back and, and look at it one more time, um, cause the increases were so, um, dramatic. We, we decided to actually come down less than the percent of the increases, if that makes sense.
Yeah, save it. Please vote.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Item number eighteen is an introduction of ordinance amending ordinance number sixteen eleven M C series, which established a program to assist low-income households in the payment of water, sewer, and garbage trash collection fees charged by the City of Sulfur, ordinance fifty-one twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
Save it.
Save it.
He's, he's mentioned earlier, it's an eighteen dollar.
Well, it's actually more than that, um, but it's, it's twenty, it's twenty-three dollars and some change, I believe. Twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents is what it will be with this.
Twenty-three, twenty-five?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bruce Sorensen?
I was just curious why it said eighteen on here and it's, I'm glad it's twenty-three, twenty-five, just curious.
Miss Ty.
All right, um, please vote.
Uh, Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Item number nineteen is an introduction of ordinance amending ordinance number twelve eighteen M C series, which set forth a capital recovery fee charged by the City of Sulfur, ordinance fifty-two.
Already covered this one as well, it's a ten cent increase that goes back into water and sewer infrastructure for capital projects.
Save it.
Save it. Okay, uh, please vote.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. App, uh, Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
And Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item number twenty is an introduction of ordinance amending resolution number twenty-one oh-two M C series, which authorizes the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Calipso Parish Police Jury for wastewater treatment services for Mossville area Sewerage District number eight, ordinance fifty-two twenty-three, save it.
That's good, but one is good for all, we're going on the parish, the right to the parish as well.
Okay, anybody wish to speak on this one? I have nobody. Okay, please vote.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Number twenty-one is an introduction of ordinance granting a right-of-way and authorizing Mayor Mike Danahay to execute right-of-way with Entergy Louisiana L L C for property located on Invader Street, ordinance fifty-four twenty-three, Mayor Danahay. This right-of-way will allow Entergy to access transmission lines from this location. I need a motion, I, I.
Save it.
Please vote.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Number twenty-two is an introduction of ordinance setting the millage rates for tax year twenty twenty-three for general alimony, street maintenance, and fire maintenance, ordinance fifty-five twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
There is no increase proposed, these are the same rates we currently have.
Save it.
Save it.
Please vote.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item twenty-three is an introduction of ordinance declaring certain surplus movable property of the City of Sulfur and providing for the disposal thereof, shop parks, ordinance fifty-six twenty-three.
Save it.
Save it.
Let me show, you have a list. You've already looked at, I'm sure. Okay, please vote.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Appchar?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four is a resolution awarding low bid received for North Water Treatment Improvement Program. Item number twenty-four is a resolution awarding low bid received for North Water Treatment Improvement Program, removal and replacement of pressure filters, resolution nineteen twenty-three, Mayor Danahay. Move.
Madam Chair, real quick, like, um, as you remember, the issues we had at the burnout of our plant, we replaced all our paint filters, uh, vessels there. We're now doing this at North Plant. So, when we're complete, we'll have probably put in about, uh, eight to nine million dollars into our water system in those filtered, uh, vessels. And so, uh, we should see, for future purposes, we should have some pretty good water. We're getting good feedback from L D H on this too, so.
Are we having any issues, right?
Yeah, we just wanna stay ahead of it. That's what happened at the burnout.
No, I get you. I'm all about, I'm all about permission.
We wanna be in front of this.
Okay, and.
Uh, second, I believe. I'm sorry, Ms. Abchar, I'm a little late to party.
I think I was a little bit early.
Okay, please vote.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Now come to the public comment, uh, portion of the meeting. I would ask you very nicely to stay three minutes per speaker and only speak one time per item.
You know, just, okay? Yes, I just wanted to, uh, get into the public comments that the videos that I take every month, and I've been taking for about a year since they stopped the, uh, recording by the city. Those can be found on Facebook page, Concern Citizens for Sulphur. There's a page and there's a group. The page is where I post the videos first and then I might, I might not make a comment. But people couldn't post theirs, so I started a group. So, if somebody wants to start a string on their own, they can go to the group site and I have all that on, on both places. Thank you.
Anyone from staff, please speak.
No, just, once again, I just wanna thank the, uh, Home Rule Charter Commission. They, they've done an excellent job. And it, it was nice to have people come forward from the community and be able to, uh, put in the hours that they put in and the, the great job that they did. So, thank y'all very much.
Upcoming election dates, October fourteen?
Saturday.
Thank you. I have nothing.
This meeting is adjourned. Oh, I forgot to say this ends the public conversation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was very nice.